All right, we're good.
Just a second here. I'd like to call to order the February 18th, 2021 council meeting at 5:40, council work session meeting at 5:40 PM. I guess I didn't need to go to that level of detail. Just a minute, please. First of all, are there any questions on the order of agenda or items on the consent agenda?
I don't.
Council West?
I just, I don't know if this is the right place to ask this. I read this in email. I'm trying to find it again. I know it's been a busy week for all of us. Are we voting on a letter again for, or up or down on a letter to Clackamas County Registered Vehicle Federation, or is, I didn't see that in the agenda. I don't know if that's going to be addressed today, or that's offline, or...
Oh, that is in the agenda, yes.
I'm looking at it. I'm missing, I might be blind.
It's under Mayor's business.
I am. Simon. Oh, I see there. I read wrong. I'm good, thank you.
Got it, okay. Now let's go to councillor concerns. You know, to open up this section, I just wanted to say something about, obviously, the storm that we've been through, and thank all of our city staff for their, you know, really great work and, you know, being innovative and nimble and working really hard and collaboratively. And I'd like to thank our councillors and citizens. We had volunteers doing all kinds of things. I'm sure some of our teachers and business leaders were all involved in getting each other themselves and their friends, family, neighbors through this. So I just wanted to just thank everybody and acknowledge what a tough week it has been, and it still is going on. We're still dealing with the aftermath of that. And I know, I know that during the communications section of this meeting, Mr. Montalvo of our Public Works Department will be giving us an update. So I just thought we can probably hear some things at this point, but we could also look forward to getting more detail in our regular meetings. Do I, I do want to see if other councils, if councillors have any concerns to bring up during this work session. Council West?
One thing, and I don't know if, maybe this could be something we'd want to put on our website. I got a call today from Timber Unity and some sawmill guys that have done cords and cords and cords of free wood. They'll put it out for free. They're cured wood for people to heat their homes up. They have a stove or fireplace if they're out of power in Clackamas County. And I was called and asked if Wilsonville, and we might get an update to this, but if we have any people in homes that are still having struggle with having power and heat, I can, maybe I can help facilitate or pass on to the city manager or the staff about access to cured free firewood. And my other question, and I guess my other question I can probably save under response and recovery for Winterfest, but I didn't know if that's something that we might want to make available, or maybe all of our citizens have power now, so. But I just thought I would ask.
Okay. Any other couns, I mean, I think we'll, we'll let Mr. Cosgrove get back to you on that. Does any other, any other councillor concerns? Thank you. So we do have actually more, I think we do have a pretty busy agenda tonight, and so we'll get moving. The first item on the work session is a status update on the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. And Mr. Cosgrove and consultant Mr. De La Cruz have an update.
Yeah, just real briefly, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're going to be discussing an effort that you're well aware of, which is the process of putting together some recommendations for council that are in your staff report tonight. So I'm going to just start off by introducing our consultant that we've hired to help lead us in this effort, Bill De La Cruz. He's got some, he's going to introduce himself, talk a little bit about his background. And at the end, I'm going to just give a high-level overview of upcoming steps and process recommendations that are outlined in your staff report, just so the community's aware. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Bill, and then I will, I know that Mr. De La Cruz also has a similar meeting and discussion in Lake Oswego tonight, so I think he's anxious to make sure that he gets in when he needs to get in here and answer any questions you have. So go ahead, Bill.
Hi, Brian, and hello, everyone. And they're still in their exec session, so if it works, it works. I'm here right now. So I'm going to start with you all, and I'm really happy to be here with you, Bill De La Cruz. And as Brian said, I'm doing the consulting work with the City of Wilsonville on this DEI Boarding Commission. And I've been facilitating work around diversity, equity, inclusion, and inclusion and belonging. It's changed names over the 20-plus years I've been engaged in the work. Essentially, my role as a facilitator is just getting people together to really have dialogue around how we see each other, how our stereotypes and our biases impact our relationships with each other. And so in, in working with organizations, school districts, and municipalities such as yours, it's really focused on how do we have a really robust community engagement process to be able to have conversations about both barriers and also successes in people feeling engaged and inclusive in Wilsonville. And I think that this approach that we're taking is really the right approach to get people's voices in. And I've been really pleased with your commitment and your engagement in some of the work that I've shared with you and also with Brian and his team as well. And so we've had some community meetings that I've been invited to where we've talked with community members over the past months and talked about some of their concerns and their level of engagement. I was part of the listening session that you all had on December 8th and worked with the staff to, to prepare a lot of the documents that you're looking at tonight. And of course, you all participated in our implicit bias training, and so I hope that was meaningful to all of you as well. And staff members have all been involved in that implicit bias work as well as the DEI work. And then we also invited a couple of the community members to be a part of that development work as well. So what I offer is both the facilitation to develop your boarding commission and supporting Brian's team with putting questions together and creating a rubric, and also the development work around how do we have these conversations. So some of the work that, that you all were involved in with the implicit bias work are the same things that we'll do once this committee gets formed. And so I'm working in lockstep really with all of the staff as we prepare the applications. And we are really looking at everything through this lens of inclusion and belonging and looking at how we attract the diversity of citizens that are in Wilsonville so that they're representative on this group. And so I'm going to be involved all along the way and just know that I welcome your thoughts and questions and input as we continue to move forward. So I'll stop there, Brian, and let you jump in.
Okay, so I just want to highlight some of the recommendations contained in the staff report. And then we're going to turn it over to you all, so you can ask questions of Mr. De La Cruz and myself and staff. So I'd like to start off, I guess, with the most important kind of recommendation in the staff report is we've, we've made a commitment to folks to keep them involved. We've had this ongoing kind of informal group. And there was some discussion and dialogue about how we can continue those good faith efforts during the application process. So we do have two citizens who are not actively seeking to be placed on the committee. They won't be making application, but they would like to continue on in the process. So we thought a good way to kind of continue that commitment and honor the kind of work that they've been putting in. And this is a slight departure from how council has done boarding committee appointments in the past, but it's, what we're recommending isn't going to tweak what you do ultimately in the end. We're not asking you to change any council rules, but we are asking you to allow us to have three staff people and two folks that we've been working with. One is a school district employee, the other is a resident of Viaboa, to be part of the initial screening process for the applications. The idea would be that we have a rubric that Mr. De La Cruz has shared with us, and we've had discussion on and tweaked and refined a little bit. So that five-member group would screen those applications and then present kind of the, the top-level recommendations to you, but you would receive all the applications. So that group would simply just be filtering all the applications and making recommendations on what they kind of thought were the, were the top applications based on the rubric that we, that we put together. So that would be the one minor tweak to how you normally do business, but it doesn't really change anything in terms of how you operate going forward with recommendations. With that, we would plan to have the application process open the week of February 22nd. We all discussed that we think it would be prudent for us to have a longer recruitment process for this because it's going to require a lot of outreach, a lot of discussion, and marketing. We intend to put it in two editions of the Boons Ferry Messenger, push it out on social media, do direct outreach to community groups and folks that have been involved in the process, and advertise it online and press releases and put it on our city website. We would leave the application period open until April 5th, again, to allow for sufficient marketing and outreach. Applications would be reviewed using the rubric that we discussed earlier, and I think you have a copy of. And then those would be forwarded to city council for review, again, with the same recommendations that staff would, working with the two citizens, would, would forward you some recommendations on that. After that, all council members would be able to review the applications, interview the applicants if they so choose, and then council can provide their feedback to the mayor up until May 3rd. And then the mayor, after that, would bring a slate of nominations forward for council consideration in the May-June timeframe. Once those appointments are made, staff would work with the seated committee to begin training in early June with the idea that the committee would be up and running starting with the new fiscal year in July. So that's a lot on process. It was all in your staff report. It's more for the benefit of the community. So at this point, we're going to turn it back over to you, Mayor, to see what questions, comments, or concerns council may have with the idea that we are seeking direction here tonight. So if you have any tweaks that we want to make, now's the time to do it. So thank you, and back to you, Mayor.
You're muted, Mayor.
Okay, I'm really going to remember that. So I do want to hear if people have some questions. Couple of thoughts that I had in talking, looking at this earlier, is how good it would be, and I spoke to Mr. De La Cruz about this a little bit, so maybe you could respond on this, Bill, is, is how do we integrate into the process a, if you might call it a survey of finding out how applicants would choose to identify themselves in terms of their, their lived experience, perhaps? Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Sure. One of the things we're going to do is use the federal guidelines that they have in terms of race and ethnicity. And we have questions in the application that talk about what their experiences have been and the communities that they move in and out of. And I think through the, the live interviews that you are all able to do, we'll have some other questions where you can go a little bit deeper with the ones that you picked to be the finalists, a little bit deeper into their lived experience. So there'll be some questions about when they felt biased or other, how did they respond to that? And, and some questions about how did they see their own, when they're in conflict, how do they work through conflict? So I think what the initial application will do will give you more of a racial ethnicity identity. And then as you glean out those ones that you want to do a final interview with, then we'll get into more of that lived experience piece. And that'll give you an opportunity to sit with them either through Zoom or in person, so you can also go a little bit deeper into any of those questions that you come up with. So I think that we've got that covered so that you can have a pretty large diversity, both from race, ethnicity, and also lived experience as we go through the process.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councillor Lindvill?
Here, I used my hand up. Is that, is that not what you would like to do?
It does work, yes. I'm now seeing it. We have it set up so that I can see that now.
Okay, all right. So I have, I have two questions. One is, Mr. Cosgrove mentioned a rubric, and I don't recall seeing that in our packet. Was it somewhere and I just missed it, or?
No, you didn't, you didn't miss it. I think, I think it was because we had discussed using a rubric for the initial screening and making sure council had a rubric to go through the interview process and screening. So you may not have seen the rubric, but you will get a copy of it.
Okay, good.
And some of it, Councillor Lindvill, I'm still working on to make sure that it is what, what we're looking for in terms of the lens.
Sure, sure. And, and probably some validity, I guess.
Yes.
So my, my other question is, as in your work with other jurisdictions outside of a direct reporting structure for the committee or the board or the council, however it's envisioned in those organizations, and ours, it is a committee. Outside of a direct reporting responsibility to the council, have you seen other jurisdictions where there has been a council member who has served as a liaison or a non-voting member or had any other kind of involvement? And is that recommended, or is that not, not, not appropriate in terms of the, the freedom and the flexibility of the group and, and wanting to get, you know, in?
Yeah.
So that's...
Yeah, great, great question. I mean, typically, there is a liaison from that group, whether it's a, you know, a C-suite person or a council member. It's typically somebody who has a really large interest in this particular body of work. And their role is really just to report back to the other members of council what has happened. It's not about embellishing or putting their own spin on it or pushing the group in, in any way. And when I facilitate, their, their voice is just a part of the conversation. And sometimes they'll do a report to the team to say, here's what city's council is thinking about this work, or here's some issues that we've been made aware of. But it's pretty typical to have that liaison, and, and their role is mainly to report back to the larger council. We had this meeting, and here's some of the things we talked about. There may be an issue that the group brings up that they really want to start to move forward on, and I think that's great for whoever decides to be that person to then take that information back to the bigger council.
And just as a follow-up to that, then I noticed that we don't have that in terms of membership. Would there, would that person not be a member of the committee but rather just function as a liaison and, and be much like we've done with maybe some of our, I mean, we have different roles on different groups as council members, some as actual voting members, others as representatives. So what would be your recommendation?
I think my recommendation would be representative. And the ones that I've done in Lake Oswego, the city councilor didn't vote on things. It was all done with the members. A person was just there to kind of share and listen, and sometimes there were questions that, you know, what do you think the city council would think of this direction? And even still, this person didn't speak for council, so it was just an opportunity to have that voice there. So that would be a conversation that I think Brian would have with you all to see, think about what, what role would you like to play in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Bill. Councillor Oquerra?
Thank you. Thanks for the, kind of the update and the presentation and the continual information that we've gotten through this process. In our packet, there is a draft version of a charter. And my understanding is that's still in development, and there may be changes that will be made. So if there's feedback on that, or, you know, I suppose we can just kind of submit that to the city manager or to you. And then will we be seeing the charter again as it continues to kind of evolve through this process and be put into place more formally?
Yeah. I'll answer the first part, and then I'll pass it off to Brian. Any suggestions that you all have, take them through the city manager's office first, because then we meet as a team pretty regularly, and so we talk through everything that comes up. And then I'll let Brian answer the other half of your question.
Yeah, I would, I would view that charter as a very, very rough draft. It's going to be vetted by multiple parties. You will obviously have final say on it. You'll have a chance to look at the final recommended draft in work session, and then you will adopt the charter in a regular meeting of city council along, you know, somewhere in the May-June timeframe.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, I would, I'm sorry, councillor, I would recommend that if you have any recommendations, questions, or clarification on charter or process or anything, that you submit those to Zoe or I, and we will make sure that we address all those in our informal meetings.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, you know, and you kind of outlined the timeline, the proposed timeline for all of this work here this evening, and that's also included in our packet. And I just wanted to make a note that I appreciate having the longer application period for this. I think that's important in order to really get the message to all of the different groups within our city and, you know, make sure that everyone's aware of the, the opportunities that are here and the work that we would like to see happen in Wilsonville. So, thank you.
Can I just add one thing on just the timeline and process? We tried to be conservative here. We want to get it right. We're not necessarily in any hurry to get it done quickly. I also just want to just let council know that this, like, tis the season for new committees for the city, because we, we just did the Sister City Kitakata. We're going to have to train them up and get them a facilitator. We're also working on a parallel track on the Arts and Culture Committee that needs to get formed as well. And then we're also working on DEI, obviously. So there's a lot going on out there in terms of trying to set up groups to, you know, make the community better in, in different ways. But, so I would just maybe caution patience on a lot of this because we have, we have limited staff to get all this done, so we're trying to be conservative here. So the timeline might slip a little bit either way, but we're, we're trying to communicate to the folks that are interested in the DI committee that we are trying to get this done right, but we're also trying to make sure it's on a, a good timeline.
Thank you. I'm thinking that we are, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, if that's correct. Did I miss anyone? That we could move to our next item, which is the SMART item?
Well, I'll just say thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you all, and we will keep in touch.
Thank you very much, Bill. I really appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
So Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to take this discussion as that we're moving in the right direction, and so that we will just come back and report back to you as we move along.
We, we asked everyone for their opinion, and I think that we did hear a pretty good thumbs up, and we'll stay informed as it goes along. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so our last item on work session is an update from SMART on the Intelligent Transportation System contract. And Mr. Breshear and Mr. Loomis have a report for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Dwight Breshear, I'm the proud transit director for SMART. And we are here this evening. It's always exciting when you have a project like this that started from really an idea and grew into something incredible. We have the representative from the proposed vendor, Jeff Hunter. I see him. Hi, Jeff. With us this evening. You know, when I think about SMART and how far we've come, I think about something that Steve Martin, the comedian, said. He was asked, he said, what, yeah, somebody asked him, what's the secret to becoming famous? And he said, well, be so good that they can't ignore you. And so I think that's the way SMART approaches what it does on a daily basis. We're trying to be so good that they can't ignore us, and that was evident this past Friday. I was fortunate to be invited to a small group meeting with Congressman Schrader. And Congressman Schrader, in talking about SMART and the City of Wilsonville, said that we are a model for the entire country. And so, of course, I was sitting a little taller that particular day. But joining me this evening is Eric Loomis, our operations manager and the project manager for this particular project. We are, wow, I've never been told. People can't hear me, huh? That's unusual. Eric is the project manager for this particular project, and he's taken it from concept to where we are today. And he's going to take you through the presentation. And Jeff Hunter, again, is part of the proposed vendor. And between the two of them, they should be able to answer all of your questions, including how the pyramids were built, right, Eric?
We'll see.
All right. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
All right. Thank you, Dwight. And good evening, Mayor and councillors. So what is an intelligent transportation system? So it's changed over the years, particularly for transit. It's really a very fully integrated, all-inclusive technology package that touches every piece of our operations. So there's three main parts to that. One is the customer amenities that it provides with real-time trip information, multiple outlets for access and communication with, along with alerts. And then another big piece that we're bringing in that's new to SMART is Wi-Fi on, on the buses. Then there's the hardware and software onboard the buses. So to get all this technology to work, there's a lot of hardware that's installed in these vehicles. With that, we have automated passenger counters to count our customers on and off counts at every stop. And then a mobile data terminal or a tablet on the bus to really help and assist with the operator on the vehicle. Helps them communicate with dispatchers, with supervisors, as well as keep them on time, not too early or too late to stops. And then the operations with this software is the, the dispatching software that dispatchers have for both fixed route and demand response or dial-to-ride services that we have. And the reporting component to this as well is the data we receive from the onboard technology helps us with our state reports, our federal reports, and as well as regional as well. So we're excited to have help with those instead of some of the processes we do that are manual. It'll really be a lot more efficient in that manner. So let me share my screen here with you for... So a little background of this project and where the funding is coming from. So we currently do have a technology package, a transportation, a technology system installed. The contract with that current vendor was up last summer. So in the process, we acquired some funding through the statewide transportation improvement fund. It's a discretionary grant, so it was competitive that we had applied for to have a request or proposal put out to see what new technologies were out there, what we could acquire. We've grown in the last five years since our last technology package has been out. So our reporting system to the National Transit Database, the FTA, has significantly increased. We went from a rural reporter to a full reporter, and that brings additional federal funding into, into SMART, into Wilsonville. So with that, of course, comes a lot more... So with that, of course, comes a lot more reporting. And so with that, we wanted to see what technologies were out there, tools that could help us do that instead of, again, doing some of the manual reporting we've been doing. So we applied for the STIF discretionary grant. We were successful in acquiring $424,000 with that grant. Through that partnership with ODOT, set up regional quarterly meetings with some other providers in the area that had similar projects. So we were able to gather ideas and content for the proposal from those other groups. So that was a really helpful tool through this grant process that we used. We put the proposal out last summer, in 2020, and we received seven proposals back. We had a scoring committee, review committee, that looked it over, and that was built from several agencies within the city, departments within the city, including IT, fleet. We even had a driver on our scoring committee to see that aspect of it. And then we also took notes from our customers, from feedback from our previous technology package, to see what they wanted to see in this package. So with that, we, the review committee interviewed three of the proposers, and the one that scored the highest during that process was GMV Synchromatics. And so I will briefly turn it over to Jeff to kind of give you a quick background on who GMV Synchromatics is.
Thank you, Eric. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. So GMV Synchromatics has been doing what we do since 2006. We have about 125 clients across the country, all sizes of transit providers. Our primary type of client is a municipal transit operation, and that's all the way from an operation of five buses to an operation of 300 buses. We really take pride in providing tools not only to help the operations of our clients, but also to serve their communities. And we really take that to heart. We're a bunch of, a bunch of people very passionate about transit. There's about 60 of us in the company, and you'll be supported primarily from our Los Angeles headquarters, so we're on the same time zone. One of our staff and lead trainers for this project is based in Olympia, Washington, so just a couple hours away. We also do, you know, in light of what's happened over the last week across the country, but in Wilsonville, we take pride in being kind of a, in being a point of leverage for our clients to use our staff of 60 employees to help transit agencies in need, whether that's a hurricane in the south, or in a climate in Maui, or flooding, or a winter storm. We can help push messages out to the community through our tools and really, you know, fuel an agency's response with some, with some third-party help, especially where it's a small operation that might be focused on, you know, safety on the road that particular day. We bring those tools from 300 bus agencies to 30 bus agencies, and we see our clients, especially small and medium size, at 30 to 50 bus rates, getting a lot of value out of, out of some of those things that they might not otherwise have access to. So I'm here primarily to answer any technical questions, but also happy to go further into the background of GMV Synchromatics if anybody does have questions. And thank you again.
Thank you, Jeff. So going a little more into detail on the technology package here, we have the Wi-Fi on buses, so I'll go into a little more detail in a couple slides here on that, as well as the automatic passenger counters, the voice-over Internet protocol radio. So that's through the tablet will allow communications between our, private communication between our drivers and dispatch, or a supervisor as well. So that is in addition to our two-way radio that we have, which is over a louder speaker to the customers as well. So this is a private conversation, private line to our supervisors and dispatchers. Then the fixed route CAD AVL system will be on the bus. That is kind of the centralized brain of the operation, if you will, that controls the voice enunciators, the GTFS real-time, the Wi-Fi. It connects all of these together. The automated voice enunciator is just a loudspeaker that will let our customers who may have a visual impairment or hearing impairment, that it'll allow them to know where the next stop is. And then the GTFS real-time. So we currently have GTFS, but real-time is really the up-and-coming technology that allows users to see where the bus is, not only on an app, but I'll show you later on other maps, mapping devices as well. We also have real-time passenger information. So this is our sign at the transit center, so that our customers will be able to see when the next bus arrival is for all the routes. And one option for expansion here is to get smaller real-time passenger information kiosks at some of the major stops we have throughout town. So we're also planning for that as a different project that we'll integrate into this one. Dispatching and scheduling software. So this will be a new software for us, particularly on the dial-to-ride side, to create some more efficiencies than we've seen in the past. So we're excited to get our dispatchers working with that, and basically raise that ceiling so we can give more customers of transportation services there. And then reporting tools, again, with our state, federal, and regional reports. Some of the real-time passenger information gives you a quick view here, that they have options, access through web browsers, through iOS and Android app applications. Also, basic phone, a flip phone, if someone doesn't have a smartphone. They can text or call a number at a particular stop and get information that way of when their next bus is coming. And then again, that digital signage that we'll be incorporating in the future. So for the customer experience, this is one thing we were really excited about, is this will be completely customized and branded as SMART, so our customers can identify what the app looks like when they're utilizing it. And we can also push our information, any kind of communication or alerts, or detours to this app, where our customers can have that readily available and immediate information if needed. Here is a closer picture of what that app may look like. Particularly, if you look at the circle down at the bottom, it might be hard to see there, but what it's circling is a percentage of how full the bus is. And that really, particularly the times we're in, we might have customers concerned about how full that bus is. So if it says 80% and they're just, they want more space, they can wait for the next bus. But it also is a lot of great data for us in the operations of looking at future planning and scheduling. And so if we notice a particular time of day at a particular stop is consistently full, 80 to 100%, we can revise our schedule, add more buses to that route, higher frequency to alleviate that pressure. So that's really a good reporting and planning tool for us. And here, so this is portrays, not only is there the app that customers can download and log into, but it also shows you the different mapping, Google Maps, Apple Maps, the transit app, or just your web browser on your phone that you can utilize. So this is an open API system, so this information can be, this live information can be shared across all these platforms. So we're really excited about that. It gives our customers access in several different ways that we haven't had in the past. Here's a little more information about the Wi-Fi for passengers. It's, obviously can be productive for them. We can have control over it and filtering content. There's an opportunity there that we'll kind of dig deeper in as we get going on this with advertising revenue opportunities, something we've looked at in the past in different ways, billboards on buses, but this is a different approach to that. So that's something we'll definitely keep in mind. And then having a secure bus network, having the 4G network on the bus, it's industrial grade hardware on the vehicles, and then separate secure channels for transmission priority on those. So, yeah, it should be a really good system. We're really excited to have Wi-Fi for our customers on all of our routes. So some of the marketing that we're going to be doing, some of our general outlets that we typically work with, Boone's Ferry Messenger, we're going to do a big push when this is, once we've done with, we're done with implementation and testing. Boone Ferry Messenger on the buses, the bus shelters, we'll be able to put some marketing materials there. Of course, our website and Facebook as well. But we're excited, Michelle Marston, our programs coordinator, she's really excited to get going on this project and bring this information to the public, to the, just another great tool for them to have access to when they're riding our vehicles. Moving forward, we have, for our timeline, installation, so we'll get started. If council looks through the resolution and approves it, we'll get started right away on that. And installation will, should get finished up around June or July. And then there's a testing period before the go-live around August. So that's our current timeline. And this is a three-year contract. We put two-year, two one-year optional extensions into that. And then we also have room to expand on this technology. So example of that would be our onboard security cameras. Those can be integrated into the cellular service, so we have live data from those. And so, and then our reader boards as well. We can integrate those into this technology. So there's a lot of different options, room for expansion as technology expands. So, I guess before we get to questions, I know that you all received some revisions to our contract today, so I just wanted to kind of go over those a little bit. Just that it isn't substantially final form, so we might make some minor modifications, just some clarifications to that, but it is in substantially final form with that. So if there's any questions, please feel free to ask myself or Jeff. Yeah, I'll open it up.
Thank you. Phil, thank you.
Well, thank you for making a lot of pages into a really simple presentation. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. I am excited that we're going to have this kind of capability, and I have, I have a few questions. One is, one is a fairly simple one, and I just wanted to know, does this, does Trimate have this kind of system in place? Or will we be a step ahead of where Trimate is right now? That's my first one.
Yeah, and that's a great question. They do have very similar technologies. A lot of it is their own proprietary technology for their size of agency. One thing they don't do, they do share their, they have an open API, they share their data, but they don't really create their own, like, they don't have their own app with a live bus tracking capabilities that we will with this. So they leave that to third-party vendors to do what they please. So that's probably the biggest differentiation between theirs and ours.
Well, that's, that is just, that's super. And then on the project schedule, I recognize that we're not following that schedule just simply because the contract award certainly was not back in November, but is, then everything's kind of been moved forward. But I just wanted to be sure that I was reading it correctly, because it looks like all the dates say 2020 on them instead of 2021. So I'm assuming that we're talking about all of this being 2021, but are you talking about 2022 for some of the implementation? Will it go out that far? Or will we be up and running and pretty much ready to, you know, with all of the implementation prior to the end of the calendar year?
Yeah, yeah. So our goal with this is to do testing this summer, and then by August, September, hopefully at the latest, we would have this fully launched, and we'd be on auto-control, so to speak. Everything would be, already be implemented at that time.
Well, I'm sure Counselor Ockervall is delighted with the analytics, so, I'm sure she is. And I think it will make, it'll make SMART's job in terms of the analytics even better. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor, don't worry, we'll stay two steps ahead of Trimate. That's one of my goals.
Well, I don't see any other hands raised. I'll be looking for them, but I wanted to add that I've done quite a bit of commuting from Wilsonville and then on into Portland, to northeast and southeast, and also to, to just the main Beaverton area. And I really relied on those kinds of tools. It's really great to be able to, sometimes you don't want to, I didn't want to even try to see if my phone would connect to look it up on the internet, and it's really handy to be able to just call that number. It just gives you a lot of convenience. And I remember that one of the key things, you will know this much better than I do, but I remember hearing that one of the things that helps people want to ride transit is that it is frequent and reliable. And so this is one way that helps eliminate a lot of those unknowns. And you certainly have unknowns when you get in a traffic jam in your car, you don't know how long it's going to take you to get home. So this always, I thought, is a good way to say, you know, look, the next one's going to be here in 15 minutes, I'm going to go do one more errand. And I love the idea that you can see how many people are on the bus, too, and that that allows us to increase service on routes where there's a lot of activity. So, and I, I'm just really pleased with this. So any, that's what I just had to comment. Any other comments or questions? Well, it looks like we have covered this topic, and I thank you very much for this presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and counselors.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Mayor.
And so that concludes our topics for the work session, and I will adjourn the work session at 6:27 PM. We'll see you in seven, we'll see you at 7:00 PM, correct, Mr. Cosgrove?
Yes.
Thank you.